If I could have your attention, it's four o'clock. We're going to call the December meeting to order. And the first item up is our pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Cuomo.
Everybody just stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our mission statement will be read by Ms. Elphabut. Well, here we go. Oh, she says here, give the address. I thought it was on the wall.
Beaufort County schools will provide quality education programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thank you. Any comments? Well, that brings us to the one event we do every, how many years? Every other year. The swearing in of our current and new members, if we have any new members. And this year we did. So, Don, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce our guest, Mr. Paramore.
Yeah, Marty Paramore. If you would come up and take care of the swearing in for us. We appreciate you being here as always.
Thank you.
So who do we have here?
We can do them all at once or one at a time?
All at once.
I think we can do them all at once sometimes.
Yeah. Does Mac have everything he needs?
I've got something right here.
I would prefer to do them all together and I think you would.
Sure. Yeah.
Are you ready?
I think I should.
We're going to come out front?
No, he's going to say.
The list is right there.
Oh, the list.
Yeah.
You know, you should be. I was just having that.
I'll kind of let the ladies lead here. This? As you were saying, we've got four, five. I can't remember five. You need to be turned around, Ed. They need to see your face, not your face.
All right, is everyone ready? So let's pledge your left hand to the Bible and raise your right hand.
Do each of you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
I do.
And do you also, this is the second part, do each of you also swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office as a member of the Beaufort County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you for your service.
Hey, do I get one?
Can you reach over there?
No, I'll walk.
Oh, he's going to walk over. There we go. Now it's official. Well, we want to welcome our members back that were reelected, and we also want to congratulate and welcome our newest member, Mr. Terry Draper. He's got a good first name. Good first name.
On the good side of the table, too.
Hey now, hey now.
You might get some pushback on that.
Watch your mouth.
I'm not going to ask for a speech.
Y'all still be nice now, his first meeting.
I'm not going to ask for a speech or anything, but anything you'd like to say about yourself?
Well, I just appreciate everyone that came out and voted for me, of course, and I hope that I can uphold the seat as well as past presidents have or people have.
Well, welcome, and as I say, you're a full member, jump right in, ask any questions. There are no dumb questions, and I can assure you, because I have already asked them all.
I saved a few for you.
Well, just jump in and ask, and anything we can help you, we would be more than happy to do that. At this time, board member elections, so I have to turn that over to Superintendent for that.
Annual, we do this where we elect a chairperson and a vice chair, and I'd like to do that at this time. I'd like to do the chair, and then I'll turn it over to the chair to do the election of the vice chair. And we'd just like to ask for nominations, and then we'll do a show of hands on the election at that point, and then turn it over to the newly elected person.
Dr. Phipps, I with great pleasure and respect nominate Mr. Terry Williams once again for our chairman.
I'll second that.
Nomination for Terry Williams. Who goes first?
See if anybody else wants to step up. Sure.
You've done an excellent job.
Any other nominations?
Dr. Phipps, I move nominations be closed.
I second.
Motion, pro, second. Any discussion on that? Here and now, all in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
And those in favor of Terry Williams serving for the upcoming year as chair again, say aye.
Aye.
Appreciate your leadership. Thank you for what you've done in the past, and we look forward to things in the future.
Really ask since nobody else jumped in. So now you're turning it back to me.
Turn it back to you.
And we're looking at vice chair. So, we'll take the same process. Can I hear any nominations for vice chairman of the board?
I feel like it would be a disadvantage to break up a good team, so I nominate Carolyn Walker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you for the vote confidence.
You writing that down?
Here again, I move nominations be closed.
I second it again.
Okay. So here and no further names, all favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that puts us to Carolyn Walker. All in favor of Carolyn Walker serving for another year as your vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposing? Well?
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Here you are again.
I will do my best.
You usually do. That's pretty good. Moving right along, approval of the agenda. Is there anything that could be changed here, Lisa? I know we talked earlier today, but I think all the changes have been put in. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this agenda?
So I move as the chair.
Second.
Okay. Hearing the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. And we need to take a look at the minutes, and we have four sets. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over those from November 21st and 28th meeting. It was the board's pleasure.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. And I think everybody was here for those, so we don't need to make any exceptions, right?
Said Mr. Draper.
Except for, well, obviously it was Mr. Draper wasn't here. Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed of that? Okay, thank you. And the first item that's up for discussion tonight, and actually, action, is Mr. Koch. I think you want to talk to us about Southside Soccer.
We sure have seen a lot of you here lately, Mr. Koch.
Congratulations. Southside has requested to start a girls soccer team in the spring. Cost to the board will be the stipend for the coach, which is the same as the boys soccer in the fall, and travel, which they don't have quite as many games as the boys on the schedule for, because schools don't, all schools don't have girls soccer, so it's a little bit less.
Do they play mainly within their conference?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Oh, I'm assuming that's going to mean they're going to have boys soccer and girls soccer.
That's correct.
So no co-ed.
There was no co-ed because if the girls played in the fall, they could not play in the spring. They only play sport once a year per North Carolina High School Association, so all the 15 to 17 girls that are interested in girls soccer at Southside have not played this year.
Okay, so Southside was not playing co-ed soccer. They were just playing boys.
They played boys soccer.
Okay.
They have a large team, and they run, actually, they run soccer in cross-country with the boys. They have a huge cross-country boys team.
And it says they already have their uniforms and all their equipment.
They're going to use everything that the boys use. I asked about the size difference from male to female, and Sean assured me he had plenty of small uniforms.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Koch about this?
No, I'm happy for them. I move that we approve this addition to their athletic team.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? Here and now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That was a pretty quick decision.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do for us. Field trips.
Have a Merry Christmas.
And a Happy New Year.
Yours, don't thank you.
We have three field trips. If you would consider these all together, I would appreciate that. The first one, as you see on your chart, is field trip 9441 from Chalkwindy Middle School, March the 17th through the 18th. It's the eighth grade trip to Washington, D.C., and they do this and get advance approval from you all because of all the work that has to be done behind the scenes. And the folks that have taken the Washington trip throughout the county have had a great experience, adults and students, so we hope that you'll consider that. You see the number of students there with breakdown as well as the chaperone, and they'll be taking the charter bus. Then 9433 is Northside High School, April the 21st and 22nd. This is in Raleigh for the Science Olympiad. Again, activity bus with the chaperone breakdown there. And then 9294 is Southside High School, the 22nd of April to the 25th. This is another trip to Washington, D.C. with the Student Government Association from Southside.
The last two, I'm assuming they do mean April of 2017.
Yeah, that should be 17.
Yeah.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
One quick question. Is Northside the only one going to Science Olympiad, or are they just the only ones that's put in for the field trips overall? Okay.
And if somebody does later, then we'll pass on to that, like we do FFA sometimes.
Okay, because I know a lot of times they do travel together. I think that's what Butch was heading toward. Any other questions? I think I heard a motion, a second over here to my left. Here and no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, did you get that, Lisa?
You got it.
A second.
You click on it.
It came from my left here, I believe it was.
How did you do it, man?
I made the motion.
In the second.
Yeah. Capital budget, is that where we're in? Mr. Gergenes, Russ.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Terry, how are you doing, sir?
Good.
Nice to meet you. I'm here on behalf of Stan. I think if y'all are not aware, he is out on knee surgery, so I'm taking his place tonight.
My pleasure.
And I won't read everything word for word, but we're going to go through a quick little thing, and if you have any questions, you can ask me, stop me, and I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. Because we have two completed projects, the staging area where the carpool pickup line at Eastern Elementary. All the students used to sit there in the dirt, in the benches, now it is all poured in concrete. Looks wonderful. It, the total cost of the project was 24, 8407, and the budget was 3,000, so it came in underneath budget. Transportation, the bus garage, those guys over there got portable air compressors in their trucks. I think last board meeting, per Stan, the budget was 7950, and it came in just over budget at 8486, but I'm assuming that was already pre-approved, so it's just updated. It is complete. We've got a couple of current projects, capital projects in progress. One is over at Chalkwindy Middle School. It's the blind installation over the windows, and that is being done within-house maintenance guys, and there's no outside contractor. We're purchasing them and putting them up as we can, as, you know, during breaks, as, you know, the students move in and out, so we don't disrupt class time. Over at EdTech, cafeteria doors are currently being modified by Beaufort County Iron Works to allow for the exterior threshold to be raised. The doors will also be installed by maintenance. Chalkwindy Primary, the owner for the 200 building over to the gym is scheduled to be installed over the holiday break by G.W. Walker and Sons, and it could be started a little bit sooner from what I was just informed. John Cotton Taylor, the bathroom fixture upgrade is in progress, and it is looking good. My plumber, he took a picture of it today, and if I could have given it to you in time, I would have. Northside High School, the installation, the electrical service, we are in the process right now of pulling a couple of circuits. Also, no outside contractor. Your electricians are doing that. The Eastern Elementary project, the enclosure project is basically complete. Stocks and Taylor have a couple of punch test items left, a couple of leaks, latch problems, normal wear and tear after new construction, but all of it's getting fixed. The metal break over the fascia around the enclosure has been completed. Stocks and Taylor and the subcontractors have done a wonderful job. Everything looks good, including the architect and all their hard work. Sometimes it's not noticed, the behind-the-scenes organization of everything. A security update, moving to something a little bit different. The enclosures of the walls, that has been pre-approved. Northeast will be the only one that will be done over the holidays because of there is no door involved in the store closure. Doors have a certain lead time. I was informed today by Mr. Doug at AAA Glass that the lead time is at the end of January. They're already ordered, they'll be here in the January, and the construction will begin. So northeast will be done over Christmas break. Do y'all have any questions? I'm sure there's something.
I have one comment. You may have already heard this from the teachers at Eastern that were affected by the enclosure, but they said it has, on these cold days, it has raised the temperature of their classroom by 10 degrees, so kids are not having to wear jackets in the classroom, that it's, it's made that big a difference by, you know, keeping that cold air out. So, they are very, very appreciative.
Good.
Looks good.
Yeah, it does. I was impressed.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I got a couple for you. Not really quick. Well, some questions, some comments. I know you're, do I safety and security. I know the bids run through Stan. How involved are you with these, well, it says security update, it's like with the northeast project? How involved are you with these enclosures that are going at the front of our schools?
The enclosures or?
You know, well, the wall, whatever you want to call it, to divert people into the office, whatever you want to call it.
I'm somewhat involved, but that has been Stan's go-to. He's taken charge. He was told as far as the overall construction of things that he was going to be handling that.
Okay, I mean, I guess that's fine that he's going to handle that, but, you know, I know the doors, you say the doors have to be ordered, and they're going to be to the end of January.
Yes, sir.
Because we've already had, you weren't here, so I don't want to put you on the spot, but here's where I'm headed at. We had already talked about getting as many of these done as possible over the break. Now, if the doors are going to hold us up, that'll be fine, but I don't want to come to the end of January and hear that it's going to be February, and come into February and here it's going to be March.
Yes, sir.
And where I'm headed at is, I do not intend this to be another Eastern fiasco that we had that went on for a year. Do you think we're going to be okay not approaching those kind of issues that we had at that other school? Because if you're not involved, since you are safety and security, maybe you need to get involved.
Yes, sir. I agree. If everything is, that's been pushed to me as far as knowledge goes, and the doors do come in, and they're telling us that once the doors come in, it's going to be one behind the other, going to school to school for school. If that knowledge is true, and that information, then it will be done in January, start at first school anyway.
Because I have this year, we approved seven schools for that project already, and so now we're going to have one of them done over the holidays rather than any of the rest of them.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, you might want to just check with Stan and when he gets back, I know he's out, but check with him and make sure these things are really coming in in January, because I don't want anybody to come back in here at the end of January and tell me we're going to be another month.
Yes, sir.
And we've got five or six other schools. Is there any, check on that for me also.
Okay.
The other schools, as far as what projects, what are we going to be doing about those? Because we have meetings coming up in April, and I know it sounds like that's way off, but by the end of April, when we have a meeting with the commissioners, I don't want to be talking about these things here.
I understand. I'll follow up for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Is there a way you could talk to AAA and see if they couldn't just go ahead and do some of the storefront and just come back and put the doors up when they come in?
I can, I can follow up with that. As far as I know, before Stan went out, he advised me that cutting the metal sheet metals and the glass, I think, not be a problem. It was the doors that were a lead time. I don't know if there's a misunderstanding of, if you want us to proceed with that, maybe that's something I can move forward with on AAA tomorrow, touch base, and see if there's any way we can.
I think it'd be better to try to get as much work done as you can during the holidays.
Absolutely.
I mean, even if they just had to come back and put up a door one day to keep from having to interrupt school and everything, so I would try to.
Request, okay.
There are certainly some, some of these that can be done while the students are there because it's not that disruptive and it's not near a classroom.
Right.
But as we all know, some of them are near classrooms, and I, if you can do it when the kids aren't there, I know just from the teachers at Eastern, the beating and banging that was going on while they were trying to, doesn't take much for a five-year-old to get distracted, but ad beating and banging and people walking past the door, it became very disruptive, but it was necessary because we didn't do it in a timely manner prior to that.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah. And, you know, as soon as you put security update, that kind of ties you to it. I understand.
So, you know, what I'm saying is, I want you involved.
Okay.
And if there's any, you know, any issues why you can't get involved with that, just let me know that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I have another question. The part you were handling, how is that going?
Going good.
Is it? Okay.
We're moving forward with a bunch, a bunch of things, and I wish, if I could have worked with technology and had them download the program where we could all view it, we could have seen some live front doors, some live auto demo cameras, and I feel safe to say, without making it too much of a public note, that we have picked a camera that we very, very, very like, and it's going to work very well, and we're ready to push that out. So, you should be seeing something happen.
Okay.
I mean, Washington, Washington High School is moving forward, things at Eastern, and you'll be seeing something soon.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be talking to, at the end of the meeting, something to the board about this one, hopefully take place in January.
Yes.
So that might be your opportunity to come back and show us that.
Okay, cool.
Okay, but I appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us over to Title I services. I know this isn't the, this is more of the behind-the-scenes stuff, I think.
Notice this is a no-action item, and the reason is that we want policy to sit for two readings, and there's some requirements that we have in place, Greg, from the state and federal level?
Yes, sir.
That, some wording and some requirements that we have to have added to the policy, so we have that in place. We thought initially that it was going to, on the advice that we have been given, that we needed to get it fast-tracked and ask for an exception of the rules, but we were told recently that we can, can relax that a bit, so what we want to do is go through our normal adoption process and just have this be the first reading, and we'll come back to you with it in January for final approval.
And this, this is a new policy.
So what does this actually say?
You want to speak, Greg?
Sure.
You want to speak to?
Oh, sure. It is a new policy, and it's on the advice of our council with the School Boards Association. It's been in federal law for many years, and we've always been following it. This year, for the first time, the Department of Public Instruction, in our annual comparability report, required or asked the question, do you have a district policy on file with regards to Title I comparability? It started quite a bit of discussion among Title I directors in the state because of all the LEAs, and I talked to several, several Title I directors, none did. So we entered into discussions with folks at federal program monitoring at DPI. They entered into discussions with the School Boards Association, the policy service that we subscribe to, and our council at the School Boards Association came up with this policy that meets the federal and state requirements for reporting on Title I comparability of services. Again, we've been doing this for many years, and we've been following federal law. It's just now DPI is asking us to have a policy in place stating that we are doing what the federal government already requires us to do.
Okay. So we just take this as a first reading and come back?
We'll come back in January.
Any questions about that? Can I ask you something else?
Yes, sir.
You know, as soon as you bring up Title I, it's always, I got to say something.
Sure.
When, when is it? He remembers. When is, it's usually about April or May when you come back and actually show us when we get the dollars.
We do. It's normally in May because hopefully by midway, we receive from DPI what's called a planning allotment, which is, which is supposed to be what we're supposed to receive for the next year. I'll go ahead and let you know that we received our second installment for the year that we're currently in last week, and the final installment was $18,000 less than the planning allotment, and it was that, it was a reduction for every LEA in the state. So statewide, the state received less from the federal, but it is generally in May. Last year, you may recall that I came back in January and talked with you and brought forth some scenarios, and we're more than glad to do that, to come back, you know, earlier in the year and bring some scenarios with what we anticipate might be the additional decreases in funding based on our poverty level and based on our declining enrollment, and I'd be glad to come back and bring some scenarios to you.
And that's all I was headed toward, and it doesn't have to be January. I mean, but if you don't mind, could you do that again?
Sure.
And, and just put some, some scenarios together for us, because I have the same, you know, issues that I had before, and I'd rather let you know way ahead of time and so we can at least talk about it. And I hope the board feels the same way. So let's look at some things a little bit different, because, you know, we still have two schools, PS Jones and CMS, that are not participating in Title I funding, and we recently had the principals in, and we had them give us, you know, what their plan was for the next year, and then some questions was asked, and one of the schools was asked, if there's any one thing that could help you make a difference in your school, what would it be? I believe Ms. Walker asked a question of PS Jones, and it was Title I funding. And I know that's the same thing with CMS. So all I'm saying is, I mean, I've, I've served on this board now, this will be my sixth year, and we have done the same thing each year for all six years, and yet the results coming out of some of these schools are way less than what I believe are acceptable, but yet we don't seem to ever want to, we don't ever seem to change or do anything different. So I don't understand how we can ever expect to have any different results if we don't do anything different ourselves. So I'm just saying, can we at least look at some different scenarios and give these schools a chance to, to improve theirself if that's, if this will help? I'm just saying, you know, because I just, I just think it's ridiculous that we put the same, we just do the same thing all the time and expect something different to happen, but.
I'd be glad to put, I'd be glad to put some scenarios together, and I think.
And I appreciate it.
I think this year it may be even more critical, because with looking at where at with funding, where we were about five years ago with about 2.35 million.
Yeah.
year I'm hoping 2 million, so you're talking about a $350,000 reduction over five years. If we're going to look at adding schools, we need to talk about it early, we need to talk about what the allocation and the amount would be, and I think we're going to have to also look at some things on the table that we maybe haven't had in the past, such as pre-K and instructional set-asides and so forth. Because in order to balance it, I think there's going to have to be some cuts that are going to be made. Now, I wish I could stand before you and say our enrollment was booming and that we were going to have a larger allotment, but, you know, you're in a district that's lost 1,000 students in the last 19 years, so, and we're not that different than a lot there in the northeast. So, I'd be delighted to put some different scenarios together, adding schools, possibly taking some of the schools off, or, you know, removing some pre-K as well, and that way you can kind of see when the rubber meets the road, how it would look.
And that's all I'm asking for, because I haven't even spoke to the rest of the board, I don't know what they're thinking, I'm just saying that, you know, this is, and this isn't the only issue, there's a lot of issues that we need to look at doing things differently if we think we're going to make a, you know, a change and make things better. So, that's, and I actually looked at the pre-K, you just mentioned that, see, I think that, I think it's more than just adding two schools and dividing the funds differently. I think there's some programs within that we need to look, take a hard look at and see, are we getting our share, because there was over 400,000 spent in that one area.
And that's just in Title I pre-K, that is an accounting C pre-K, so it's a lot.
And I'm just saying, I just want you to run some different scenarios.
We certainly will.
I know it's tough, and I appreciate it.
Well, it'd be easier if we had more money, but it doesn't-
It always would be.
But Dr. Phipps and I will work together on that, and we'll do that. Are there any other questions? This is a first reading tonight, so there's no action.
No, I think in agreement with Terry, and to add on, I think across the board, and Dr. Phipps and Mr. Don have both kind of warned us that it could be even tighter this year trying to do our budget, so I think all the way around, we're going to have to get very creative on how we allocate our funds, we are going to have to tighten our belts, things that we've automatically voted yes on because it made sense. Now, it's not going to be whether or not it makes sense, it's going to have to be, is this effective? Because if things are not effective, I don't want to keep going down that road, I think we got to back up and punt, and just, we can't, I'm not trying to make anybody mad out there, I'm just saying, and I'm not saying cut anything yet, I'm just saying we have to become better stewards, and I think we're good stewards now, but when there's, when, we don't hold the gold, and therefore we don't always get as much as we need, but we're going to have to get creative with what we do get, and if a program has been going on year after year after year, and we're not seeing any results, I think we have to be big boys and girls and say, you know, this isn't working, we're not going to keep putting money there, we're going to put it over here, but, and you're the one, and Dr. Phipps and Mark, I can't do that, I don't know how to do that, but I'm hoping that y'all do.
We can bring you some different scenarios, we did that last, you know, we've done that in the past, and we'll be glad to bring you some different scenarios.
But look at, as you said, look at other than just adding two schools, look at within the program, is, are we spending the money the way that has benefited us? Because, well, I got my thoughts about some of them already, but I'm willing to listen to anything. But on the flip side, some of this money, you got to be careful, you have a whole lot of flexibility, you have to spend it the way they can.
And I don't want us to be a- Well, there are certain things, for example-
Oh, I know, there are guidelines, but I mean, there are some things we've just automatically been doing because it made sense, but we're not seeing the results from it, for whatever reason, I don't know. And that's where your leadership will help us understand, these are things we have to do, and we have to do it a little differently in order to keep these funds coming for those programs.
But Matt's right, too, you don't get federal money without strings attached.
Lots of strings.
Yeah, with Title I, for example, there's a certain amount that, like on homeless children, we have no choice.
I know that.
And what I can do is take, we can take it down each line and say, we have to, you don't have to, you want to.
Right.
And, you know, we can, we can-
That's what I'm getting at.
Take care of that.
Appreciate it a lot.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate the work. Merit pay update?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to apprise the board of some good news. We, you may or may not know, and I certainly didn't understand it until I started working in the finance realm, of how many of our employees are paid from multiple pots of money? Because we're basically trying to take advantage of every dollar we can, so having said that, we have employees that may be paid by federal, state, and local funds, but what that does when you start calculating the merit pay plan that I originally brought to you that you approved, it has actually enabled us, because of the state funds we were given, to increase how much our folks are getting. So, I just wanted to let you know that our folks who fall into the merit pay plan, who are classified staff, who will be given this money next week in their paychecks, that instead of the original numbers that I gave you, the lowest number is now $400, where it had been $200. So, we've been able to add money to each level, the, those folks in the lowest bracket would get 400, the next highest is 425, 475, 525, and 575. So, we were able to squeeze out a few more dollars and increase the amounts.
Without it changing our bottom.
That's correct, that did not have, yes, that just, we were just able to maximize the dollars a little better, so.
That's good.
See, there is some good news everywhere.
Good news for a change.
Thank you, thank you, for the good news.
And I believe we stay with you, Mark, on grants.
Yes, sir, you have two grants that I just wanted to make you aware of. The first one is the Beaufort County Child Nutrition Department requested a grant of $94,100 from the USDA Farm to School Program. This would help our child nutrition department process store and serve fresh local fruits and vegetables for our students. The majority of the funds are to establish a central kitchen at Beaufort County EdTech, which is equipped to process fresh seasonal products, including strawberries, collards, and squash. The central kitchen also be used to prepare meals for USDA Summer Food Service Program. Other activities in Central Kitchen will include classes in cooking, canning, and freezing conducted by the Beaufort County Cooperative Extension. The remainder of the grant funds will support school garden projects and helping local farms pursue gap certification, which is required to sell products. So, we're putting our name in the hat and hoping to receive this, but just want to make you aware of in case you saw anything on the news about it.
So, it's an application?
It is, yes, that's right, we requested that, we don't, we don't know that we have it. And then the second, you have a chart, Tideland EMC offers, has a program called Bright Ideas that they offer grants to teachers, those teachers write proposals, and we had four teachers who received grants. The first was Lisa Statts at CMS, her title was Get Your Move On Couch to 5K, this was about six grade students participating in training for a 5K and using incentives, she was awarded $576.19. Then Robin Potter at CMS, Sit, Stand, Move, and Learn, she was awarded $648.50. The project provided what she described as fidgety, active students with stand-up desks and alternative seating, so instead of the traditional sitting. Alan Bateman at PS Jones, Learning Entrepreneurship in Middle School, How to Start a Business, $1,265, having students learn how to go green in various stages of business, real-life experiences managing their own school garden, also understanding turning that into a school business. And then Eric Godwin at Washington High School, Urban Raised Bed Garden, $1,991.96. Grant materials, grant funds produced materials to construct raised bed gardens using concrete blocks at Washington High School, and then anything produced from those bed gardens we donated to the local food bank. So, all these grants were awarded to our teachers by Tideland EMC.
More good news?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tideland.
Absolutely, glad someone steps up, that's great. Any questions about that other than what he's already told us?
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go to closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statutes 115C-321.
We have a motion in a second to go into closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? We're in closed session, and it won't take us that long, I don't think, I think we'll be back.
Merry Christmas.
See you, Russ. We're back in open session, and the first item up is to approve the personnel agenda that we just discussed with the addition of that, the one item that we left off.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, good. Calendar for January and February?
First thing-
Yeah, go ahead, I had something to say, too, but it might be the same thing.
The first thing I want to ask you about was the January 3rd meeting, which comes right after, obviously, January 2nd.
Yeah, it does this year anyway, right?
But that's in 2017, I said.
We, there's not going to be a lot that's going, will have gone on, work-related, because we're out for the Christmas break for the two weeks, I don't know if we want to look at that date, but I'd also like to ask us to take a look at the calendar and come up with the date for the January Board Retreat, which is just an opportunity for me to talk with you and give you some information of upcoming things, budget-related and programming type things and all that.
We're still keeping the same nights that we've got right now? I bet we got the ideal if it works out that way.
Nights work for everybody, the way we've got it now?
So, are you saying, let's not do the 3rd? Here's what I was going to ask about the board, too, but you've already covered on the retreat, I've got about eight different topics that I want to discuss, and I want to discuss them outside of what I call a normal board meeting, meaning by that, a normal board meeting, meaning we don't have all the other recognition, you know, the things that takes us another hour. I want us to be able to get together and spend all of our time talking about these issues, because, you know, a lot of times in our regular meetings, we have personnel issues and things that we have to talk about, and I don't want a meeting that goes on for three hours, but I think it will take us a good hour and a half to two hours. Do you want to incorporate this into your retreat? That's what we, I'm pretty sure we're on the same-
I haven't looked at your list, but we probably have-
I'm pretty sure it's the same type. Well, we, for instance, we mentioned nutrition, I want them to come in and give us a date, things of that nature, and so, but I don't want it to be part of a regular meeting so that we can just completely give our attention to that.
Mr. Chairman, we're blessed in January to have five Mondays and five Tuesdays.
Would you look at one of them as a retreat night or a retreat day?
Whatever suits this board.
You know, I'm just-
They're doing the retreats for lunch.
The 16th is-
That's even better, I like that, too.
Isn't that usually what we've been doing?
It's fine if that works, but I didn't know if it would work for everybody's schedule, so I'm willing to just do it in the afternoon, it doesn't matter to me.
But Don, you give a zero to day tech again like we did before?
Yeah, we can go to day tech, what dates are you, were you looking at, Don?
The 23rd? The 24th is a, is a teacher work, does that matter though, teacher work notice?
Matter for us. Okay, you going to do that during the day?
24th?
I, I'm going to leave it to the board, but I thought it might be hard for everybody to get off work during the day, but, I mean, I'm flexible, I can come during the day, or I can come in the afternoons, and at 5:00, 5:00 o'clock is fine, but just, you know, we would be here to probably 7:00.
I've got a commitment that night on that 14th.
What about the 23rd?
23rd?
It's a Monday.
Are you talking about a retreat?
Yes.
I'm, I mean, work-wise, I mean, work-wise, me, I don't mind taking afternoon off to do that, that's-
I'd rather have it in the late afternoon as possible.
Yeah, because you may rather have it a little bit earlier than a normal meeting, though, because I'm pretty sure it'll go a couple of hours.
What if we did 3:30 or 4:00 as a start time?
I don't know, I'm, that's, I'm leaving that up to the board here.
That'll work, and if I had to leave, I'd just leave.
Can you do a 4:00?
From Monday to 23rd?
Can you do a 4:00? For the new member orientation?
About 4:00?
Terry's going to be in the new member orientation, 23rd and 24th.
He needs to be here for the new one.
Yeah.
Because this would be a great session.
I mean, unless you want me to pick the other day, Don.
No, that's okay. How about the 26th or the 30th?
I'm good either one. I'd rather do a Thursday than a Monday.
You'd rather?
Yeah, Monday just ain't good days.
Okay, 26th is a Thursday, they say that's a better day, can everybody do that one at 4:00?
I don't know, I'm ready, I'm putting it in here.
Okay, sure.
I'm putting it in here, that's fine. 26th?
24th, 26th at 4:00.
I'm going to call it a retreat, but it's a 4:00 meeting is all that matters. So, Don, are you saying we just keep the 3rd but make it short? I mean, is what it'll probably end up being, or what do you think?
I don't know if we needed to even meet, if you want to change that date from the 3rd, I'm not sure we'll have any business.
That's early after coming back.
Yeah. I don't think we'll have any business to do that.
Are you talking about just having the board meeting and the other meeting and that being-
Well, would you want to move the board meeting up to the 10th and have one? Just have one in January?
Would that fit everybody's schedule? If we're doing that, Matt, on the 10th, what you looking like?
No, I'm just guessing right now.
What about the commissioners' meeting in January? They haven't said.
I'm sure they haven't.
But they're on Monday nights, aren't they?
Yeah, but they may be like us, too, and not going to meet on the 2nd, I was just wondering.